The regular meeting of the City Council, October 21st, at 7:05 to order. May we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Chen?
Here.
Councilmember Yu is absent. Mayor Protem Man?
Here.
Mayor Sternquist?
Here.
Motion to excuse Councilmember Yu for cause?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We don't need a roll call for that. Peggy? Okay. We move to item three, our invocation. Welcome to Pastor Kelty from Community of Christ Church. And he will be providing the invocation. His church is located at 5851 Temple City Boulevard. Services are on Sunday mornings at 10:30 a.m., and all are welcome. So please stand.
Thank you all for inviting me continually. O our great Creator, we welcome you into our presence this evening, and thank you for a most beautiful day, and for this world and nation and this community where we can live and prosper and have great joy. We would pray, O Creator, that we might recognize our jobs as citizens and members of this community, to build this community the best that we can, where all might have a welcoming and a welcoming to welcome those around us, to become the best people that we can become. We know, dear Lord, that this will be a hard task. We also know, dear Creator, that we're up to your task because you have called us to do that. Maybe we always remember to look to the people, for the people, and of the people, that indeed we might indeed leave a generation to come with a place better than that we've founded. This would be our prayer. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're gonna skip item five and go to item six, public comments on items not listed on the agenda. And I believe we have two public comments. Alicia Herndon? Welcome, Alicia.
I hope you don't mind. I apologize. Good evening. I have to use my phone because I'm a little nervous here.
That's okay. If you don't mind just speaking into the microphone though so everyone can hear you.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Alish Kai Herndon. I live here in Temple City. I've been a resident for over 30 years. And I chose to return here after my retirement. So I just returned recently to retire. I care deeply about our neighborhood and want to see it remain a place we can all be proud of. However, over the past several weeks, the conditions of my street has become increasingly concerning. Street sweeping hasn't occurred in front of my home, not due to the street sweeper not coming. It's due to cars consistently being parked in front of the home. And this has been for over the last five weeks exactly, since past Friday. Including that, we have cars that have been parked on lawns, five-wheelers parked on lawns, businesses using their driveway for their drop shipment. Sorry. These issues not only affect the appearance of our neighborhood, they also raise safety and code enforcement concerns. I'm here tonight, but I want to note that many of my neighbors that I did speak to, so it's not just me, even though they're not here in the audience forum tonight, they have also have spoken the same concerns to me. We weren't able to get a collective letter signed to present because we kind of just realized that tonight was the meeting. And I said it was strong enough for me to not go to sleep early tonight, but to come out and then let you all know what's going on out in the city where you may not see it. I just respectfully ask for the city to look into stronger enforcement of parking and code violations. They're doing a great job, but it seems like sometimes these things do get missed. But I do wish that the council would address the street sweeping, the landlords who are using renters. If they could please kind of enforce that, that renters are also part. It's not an owner-renter community. It's an everyone community. And then also, and request that those renters also provide and keep the city as beautiful as it was when I first moved here and the reason why I returned to be here for my retirement. And that's pretty much it. I hope I didn't forget anything, and I thank you for your time and your continued service. Thank you all very much.
Alicia, our city manager is, will be at the meeting in a little bit, but I know Alex will give him the information, and he will call you and work out a resolution. So I appreciate you coming this evening, as I'm sure all the council does, to let us know personally. It's a testimony to how passionate you are when you take the time to come. So very much want to thank you for doing so.
It was a beautiful city when I moved here, and I wanted to, I don't want to stay in the past, but it was very beautiful, and I want to remember why I came here and why I want to stay here and why I said, I told everyone who I was working, where am I going? Going back to Temple City. I'm going back to Temple City. So I wanted to be there.
Well, you're glad you chose us.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay. Avantika is here, and she is going to talk to us about Diwali.
Good evening. Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
You guys can hear me? Okay. Namaste, respected mayor, councilmembers, and everyone present this evening. My name is Avantika Varapalli, and I'm a junior at Temple City High School. And I'm also a youth volunteer at an organization called Hindu Swam Sevak Sang, or known as HSS. And we are a community organization that works to preserve and share Hindu values through service, cultural education, and leadership development. So as you all may know, our youth group's marching band has been participating in the annual Camellia Festival for the past four years, I believe. And it's become a tradition for all of our volunteers to look forward to. And we are honored to be here today to share with you guys about Diwali, which is one of our most significant and joyous festivals celebrated by Hindus worldwide. So a little bit about Diwali. The word Diwali, or Deepavali, it's also called that, means a row of lights. And historically, it's celebrated as a victory of good over evil. And usually, oil-filled lamps, which are called dhas, are lit on this occasion. And they're known as a celebration of inviting light and removing darkness, also good prevailing over negativity, and basically a symbol of knowledge guiding us through ignorance. Across the world, Diwali is a time for families and communities to come together and to clean their houses, decorate their house, light lamps or candles, wear new clothes, exchange gifts, all of that, share sweets, and basically express gratitude for life's blessings. And it's a season that encourages reflection, togetherness, and a hope for a brighter future. What's beautiful about Diwali is how it's celebrated differently across many different regions and countries, but the spirit is still the same no matter where it goes. So beyond India, Diwali is celebrated in many countries such as Nepal, Trinidad and Tobago, Fiji, Mauritius, Guyana, the United Kingdom, and right here in the United States as well. No matter where it's celebrated, the message is the same, that light, goodness, and unity can shine even through the darkest times.
Namaste. My name is Ruthwick, and I'll be talking about the social service aspect of HSS. Seva, meaning selfless service, is an integral part of Hindu philosophy. With this spirit of selfless service to the society, HSS, in collaboration with other Hindu-American organizations, has been conducting a food donation drive during Diwali called Seva Diwali. Since its inception in 2018, through the Seva Diwali initiative, the Hindu-American community collected and donated close to 3 million pounds of food for fellow Americans suffering from hunger. Our local HSS chapters in Temple City and Arcadia have been conducting such food drives through door-to-door campaigns partnering with local grocery stores. And we have donated the proceeds to local organizations such as Foothills Community Center and Friends in Need.
Namaste. My name is Augustia, and I will talk about the Diwali awareness efforts. For the past few years, our young HSS volunteers have been doing classroom presentations, public campaigns to create awareness about Diwali and improve cultural awareness and cultural sensitivity among fellow citizens in the process. We are happy and proud to share that. California recently passed AB 269, signed by Governor Newsom, which makes Diwali an official state holiday in California. This is a meaningful recognition of our Golden State's diversity and shared values that Diwali represents, like inclusion, joy, and the triumph of light and hope for everyone. It's wonderful to see how a festival that began thousands of miles away has became a cherished part of California's cultural fabric.
So in the name of that spirit, Hindu Swam Sevak Sang, we will be taking the initiative to plan a Temple City Diwali Fest. And it's basically, the plan is to have it like an open community celebration where residents of all backgrounds and cultures can come together and experience the joy of this festival that means so much to us. And it's basically, we get to experience the joy, colors, and unity of this festival of lights. And we will need your support to make this possible and look forward to collaborating and working with the city of Temple City to bring this celebration to life by next year, hopefully. And in the true spirit of Diwali, a festival of sharing and joy, we wanted to bring a small token of that light and sweetness to you today. We've brought some traditional Indian sweets that we will share to you. And as a way of saying thank you for allowing us to celebrate with you and appreciate all that you guys do for the citizens of Temple City. On behalf of Hindu Swam Sevak Sang and the Hindu community of Temple City, we wish you all a very happy Diwali. And thank you, respected city council members, for giving us this wonderful opportunity to share a few words about Diwali, the festival of lights. Namaste.
So namaste is similar to aloha, where it's hello and goodbye?
Yeah, I guess so. Yeah. It's giving us a greeting. Yeah.
Okay. But so will you be contacting our city manager to talk about the festival and staff? And great.
Yes. Would you guys want the sweets right now? Or after?
Yeah, we had dinner, but we didn't have any dessert. So it comes in handy.
Thank you so much, and thank you for coming.
You can give them to the clerk.
To the clerk?
Being such nice representatives of the organization. Thank you. Okay, we are going to go back to item five, ceremonial matters presentation. And we have two attendees here this evening. From the Rose Court, we have the finalists and the princess. So we welcome you both. It's my pleasure to take a moment to recognizing two outstanding Temple City High School seniors who have represented our community with pride and distinction in the Pasadena Tournament of Roses, Rose Court selection for 2026. And I believe there were 700 contestants. So I mean, what a thrill to be able to have a princess and a finalist here with us. So please join us in congratulating Princess Livia DePaola, who was selected as a member of the 2026 Rose Court. Princess Livia embodies the values of service and genuine dedication to making a difference. And we are thrilled to see her represent Temple City on such a grand stage. We also extend our heartfelt congratulations to finalist Lola Yi, whose poise and dedication throughout the selection process reflect her remarkable character and commitment to excellence. Both young women have made our community proud, and we celebrate your accomplishments with great admiration. I'd like to invite both of you up to the front so we can take some pictures and give you certificates. And have the council join me, please. And if you could also get a picture with the...
Yes. After.
So Livia? Congratulations. Beautiful. So proud of you. Goodness. And Lola? You're so proud of you too. My goodness. Thank you so much for coming in. Families, dads, too. Cousins.
Great. Thank you very much. Gotta be quick.
Yeah. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thanks, boss.
No, it's okay. You're okay.
On this side. Come over on this side. The little ones. Come here. Okay, look here.
I knew I would do this.
Catch your notes.
Okay, we move to item seven, the consent calendar. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Man?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Public hearing, none. Item eight. Item nine, unfinished business, none. New business, adoption of resolution calling for the 2026 general municipal election and regulations, and approval of agreements for related services. Peggy?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Under the provision of the city's charter, councilmembers are elected to a four-year term at a general or special municipal election held on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in March, even number years. To conduct the city's general municipal election on March 3rd, 2026, the California Election Code and City Charter requires the adoption of specific resolutions. These resolutions include Resolution Number 255840, which officially calls the election, Resolution 255841, requesting essential election services from LA County, and Resolution Number 25-5842, regulates candidate statements. In addition to the adoption of these resolutions, the city will also enter into service agreements with Hart Inner Civic, ProVote Solutions, City of Whittier, and Snail Works to support election operations.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. Who are you entering into an agreement with?
Hart Inner Civic, ProVote Solutions, City of Whittier, and Snail Works.
Oh, all of them?
Yes. The resolutions and service agreements are provided as attachments to the staff report, and are available should council have any questions.
Thank you, Peggy. Mayor Protem, do you have any questions?
None.
None?
None, thank you.
Councilmember Chen?
No questions.
Councilmember Chavez?
Do we always enter into these different agreements? I can't remember the last time we did, but maybe because we haven't had an election in a long time. But I don't recall these, like Hart Inner Civic, ProVote. Are those all separate? They do separate things, obviously, but...
The company they used to assist the city in our standalone election, Martin and Chapman, was forced out of business. So we have to contract with several service providers to conduct that standalone election.
And how do we go about selecting these companies? Was that, did they put bid-ins? Or did we just? Are they the only ones that do something like this?
These are all pre-vetted by the Secretary of State. So we just select it from their list of approved vendors.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to open public comment on this item. Anyone? Jerry?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers. Jerry Jambezen. First of all, I want to say I'm happy with all five of you and support you. And I'm just wondering, if nobody runs, how much would the city save in dollars if there isn't an election and everybody's happy with you folks? And are you willing to run again if you're up for reelection? And I guess that's a bad question. I shouldn't have asked that. But anyway, if we could find out approximately how much we would save as a city, even though it's budgeted.
Peggy, you have an estimate about the cost, right? Correct?
Yes, but these are all just estimates.
What is the estimate?
We had budgeted 300, about 300,000 for the election. And adding up all the cost, I think we're somewhere in mid-200,000. So depending, like there's postage to be considered at the time that the ballots are mailed. And the number of mail, I mean ballots that's mailed down, the voter information guide could vary depending on how many voters, if the voter registration goes up.
So I would say, Jerry, and to those who might also be interested, possibly anywhere from 200 to 300,000 dollars, depending on all those other things that are...
Good.
Can take place.
Thank you.
And thank you for your confidence in all five of us.
Well, you're welcome. Compared to some of the other cities that neighbor us, you're doing really good. So thank you.
You're very welcome. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to close public comment. Any final thoughts, councilmembers? Those of you who are up for reelection?
There's only one of us here tonight.
No thoughts?
No thoughts.
Okay. All right. So can I have a motion for the item?
Madam Mayor, I will move to adopt Resolution Number 25-5840, calling the election for March 3rd, 2026. Adopt Resolution 25-5841, requesting election-related services from Los Angeles County. Adopt Resolution Number 25-5842, establishing candidate statement regulations for candidates pertaining to statement of qualifications submitted to the voters. And direct staff to conduct a standalone election, approve the professional service agreements as outlined, authorize the city manager to sign the agreements.
Okay, may we?
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Man?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. All right. We have an update from our city manager, and he's going to introduce some of my dear friends. So would you please?
Certainly, Mayor Sternquist. It's my pleasure to introduce Councilmember Ed Reese from the city of Claremont, who in this capacity is serving as the San Gabriel Valley Coalition of Governments, or otherwise known as the San Gabriel Valley COGS president, and to give you an update on the great work that the COG is doing.
I believe we have a PowerPoint. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for allowing me some time this evening. I am proud to represent the city of Claremont and honored to serve as president of the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments. Today, I'd like to share a little bit about what the COG does and how we bring cities together to tackle challenges, deliver results, and make our region even stronger. Next slide. The COG is truly a partnership. It brings together 31 cities, two supervisory districts, and many local agencies across the San Gabriel Valley. Our mission is simple but powerful, to give our region one strong unified voice, to deliver projects that improve transportation, housing, and sustainability, and most importantly, to improve the quality of life for nearly 2 million residents who call the San Gabriel Valley, and in part, this beautiful city, their home. The collaboration is what makes us stronger than the sum of our parts. Next slide, please. Of course, a mission this big requires leadership. That's where our executive committee comes in. I'm proud to serve alongside a group of committed local leaders, each chosen by their peers to help guide the COG's priorities. They help set the direction, review policies, and make sure our work reflects the needs and values of our member cities. And while I'm at it, I would like to recognize Madam Mayor as one of our many, but most recently in the past few years, past president. Thank you for your service to the COG.
My pleasure.
In short, the executive committee and the governing board keeps us grounded in the realities of our communities while keeping us focused on the future. Next slide, please. And that leadership, it extends outward through our policy committees. These committees are where real collaboration happens. They focus on issues that touch every city, capital projects, the environment, homelessness, and transportation, to name a few. We also draw on the expertise of city managers and working groups so that local voices can shape regional solutions. Now, this is where you come in. And if you haven't already, and I gave an example of how much you really are, but I would encourage you to get involved. Your expertise and your perspective helps ensure that your city's voice is heard and yet your residents' needs are reflected in our regional decisions. Next slide. Of course, leadership and collaboration are only part of the story. Implementation matters, too. That is where our staff shines. Under the leadership of Executive Director Marissa Kreeter, our talented team takes ideas and turns them into action. They provide the expertise, the project management, and the support that makes sure that our city's priorities move forward. Next slide. Let me share a few examples of what collaboration has achieved. First, our construction authority. We're the only COG in Los Angeles County with this authority. We're delivering 19 major grade separation projects, each costing approximately 100 to 200 billion dollars each at little or no cost to our cities. And today, we're expanding to highway improvements, transit facilities, and active transportation projects. Second is SB 1383. This state law requires us to cut food waste going to landfills. The COG has helped cities triple their business compliance rates and at the same time, help food banks to be able to use the food donation they receive by providing them with refrigerators and other necessary equipment. It's truly a win-win. We are helping the environment while addressing food insecurity. And third, Measure M funding. Just last year, we directed 36.5 million dollars to 17 San Gabriel Valley agencies for projects that make it easier and safer for people to get where they need to go. These are just a few snapshots, but they show the real tangible impact that the COG has in our communities. COG has in our communities. And beyond these regional wins, we also partner directly with cities in unique ways. Next slide, please. I'd like to talk a little bit about how we specifically partner with the city of Temple City. The COG Board awarded a one million dollars, I should say, awarded one million dollars in Measure M funding to the city's statewide bicycle route and pedestrian enhancements. This project will solve bicycle detection equipment along key intersections and pedestrian safety improvements. Around homeless outreach, the COG provides homeless outreach teams from the Los Angeles Centers for Alcohol and Drug Abuse to support the city's homelessness efforts. The additional outreach teams are funded through county sales tax funding and in project management. Through State REAP, the COG is providing technical assistance to update Temple City's crossroads specific plan, a plan that incentivizes mixed-use development, and this contract is valued at almost a quarter million dollars to the city at no cost. I shared some examples specific to your city, but the bigger point is this: the COG is dedicated to serving you and meeting you where you are, to support your local priorities, and also build something bigger together in the region. Next slide, please. So, at the heart of all of this is what binds us together: our shared love for the San Gabriel Valley. That is why I launched the iHeart SGV program. It grew from my deep belief that we are stronger when we celebrate the common values in the communities we call home. This program is about bringing our member cities and through them, our residents, together in shared pride and appreciation for the San Gabriel Valley. For me, it's also personal. My love of public service is soul-feeding, and this program is a way for me to show gratitude for our region, for our cities, and for the people who make the San Gabriel Valley such a special place to live. The COG exists to serve you, your council, your staff, and your residents. By working together, our collective voice is louder, our reach is further, and we deliver projects and services no city could do alone. And as president, my number-one priority right now is to listen. I want to hear from you, your needs, your challenges, your opportunities, so that we can make sure that you are getting the best and the most from your involvement with the COG. So, please, don't hesitate to reach out to me directly. I am committed to working with you and keeping and strengthening the San Gabriel Valley we all love. So, thank you so much for allowing me some time tonight. I would be happy to answer any questions or take any comments.
Thank you, Ed. Any questions?
Okay, I'll start. I just want to thank you for your efforts, not only serving as president of the COG, but also seeing the opportunity for the region, for the upcoming LA 2028 Olympics, forming this ad hoc committee. It's been my pleasure to attend the last three months, and also, along with the transportation projects that you've been involved with, not only forming the committee, but you actually chaired the committee, so appreciate all your efforts on that.
My pleasure, councilmember.
Councilmember Chavez?
So, Ed, I don't really know you, but how long have you been the president? How long have you been on the city council?
Yeah, so I've been on city council almost eight years.
Okay.
I've been involved in the COG since then. I was involved on the executive board just on my second year as council, and I've served as president now. I was sworn in as president in June of this year.
And do you have a term? Is it like a one-year term, or?
As president?
Yeah. How do you remain president?
Well, we serve at the pleasure of the board, but I would say on average, it's about two years.
Okay. And is there, I'm not as familiar with that, but is there a succession plan as to who's the next president's gonna be, or is that just up to the board?
Ultimately, it's up to the board, but we do have...
So, you don't have like a vice president?
We have a first vice president, a second vice president, and a third vice president. So, there is, if you will, successors in...
So, they generally move up the ladder?
Typically.
Okay. Not always.
It depends on the board and the individual.
It has been since I've been on, anyway.
Good. We like to see a good plan ahead. Thank you again for all your efforts. Appreciate it.
My pleasure, councilmember.
So, I'm very proud of you, Ed, and being the president. I recall when I was the president, we had a discussion, I think it was at the transportation downtown LA through SCAG or something, and you said, "I want to do that. How do I do that?" And I remember that, and not with my guidance, really, probably, but you've done it, and you've done it very well. So, congratulations. And if I could just have Marissa stand, the executive director, and all the staff, please, just to acknowledge them. Thank you for coming to support also.
You forgot.
Yes, of course. Oh, I thought you said, "No, go ahead." I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
So, Ed, it's been a while since we last met and spoke, but I appreciate you coming to our council meeting tonight, and I know this is part of, I think, your own initiative where you want to visit every single city council within the COG's area. So, I applaud you for that. It's certainly much different when someone comes in person, and it's well, it's a good initiative, and I applaud you for working to build those relationships. I also want to just comment, just on my engineering background side, I do appreciate deeply the great grade separation projects that the COG has been undertaking for quite a long time now. I know these projects are very complex, crossing multiple jurisdictions, and a lot of challenging technical issues. In fact, I also want to thank a member of your staff, because I had a longstanding question about grade separation projects here within the city, and they did a great job of explaining some of the physical constraints and the limitations and the challenges, and why perhaps Temple City, at least the crossings within our city are not perhaps viable candidates for some of these grade separation projects. But perhaps in the future, whereas innovation and other great ideas come to mind, perhaps there is an opportunity for the city to engage with the COG in future grade separations, and perhaps we could tackle those challenges that seem impossible now, but could be possible in the future. So, thank you for your time and your leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. I will say that we do have a great staff and a great team, and our capital projects team does a great job with all of those projects, and very innovative, and so hopefully, there is an opportunity down the road. In regards to going around to all the councils, there is thirty-one councils within the COG's region, and fortunately, I only have to go to thirty, because my council has given me a break on presenting to them. But on top of that, we are also going out to the water districts and some of the other agencies that are members. But thank you. Thank you for your comments around that, and I look forward to continuing to get out and connect with our members through this process and through all the other events and opportunities.
And, Ed, I recall that we, any one of us can be a member of any of the committees. You don't need to be the delegate. So, if you're interested in a committee, please contact the staff and let them know. So, it's another way to be engaged as a council member.
You're exactly right. So, you don't have to be the delegate. You just have to be the delegate or alternate for the governing board, but in regards to committees, any council member, and frankly, any staff member can also participate in our committees.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ed.
Before I leave, Mayor, as you can see, we, I launched the iHeart SGV program. I am wearing the iHeart SGV lapel pin, and tonight, as a token of our appreciation, I'm going to leave with you all your own iHeart SGV lapel pin that you can wear proudly within the San Gabriel Valley and beyond. With that, I will say that forgive me, as I have another commitment, so I will have to step out for the rest of your meeting, but thank you so much for allowing me time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
One more quick announcement from me, but just the staff that's there, we're blessed as a city to have organizations like CJPIA, Clean Power Alliance, and the San Gabriel Valley COG. Without those agencies working in partnership with the city, we would not be able to achieve what we achieve, not only on a day-to-day basis, but on the bigger projects that we have to endeavor with. So, their partnership is essential, so, and thank you to the boss, Marissa, Ricky, Steph. Steph Wong has probably one of the toughest jobs at the COG, because she has to deal with the city managers committee, so that is a challenge in and of itself. So, and Kevin Lai as well, the city engineer who's always been extremely helpful, so we really appreciate them, and our staff works hand-in-hand with them all the time, as we do with the other organizations who are essential partners to the city. So, thank you to them, all of them. One last announcement from me, Mayor Sternquist. Tomorrow night, here, 5:30, in the council chambers, I'll be giving the presentation related to the city's finances and our projects and some of our initiatives. There will be a virtual meeting as well on the 23rd at 5:30. Sign up. There's a Bitly link that you can sign up, and you do have to sign up for that. You do not have to sign up on RSVP for the meeting tomorrow here in person at 5:30, but for the virtual Zoom meeting, you do have to register. And then there'll be a meeting on, several weeks later, on November 13th at 5:30, right here at the city council chambers as well. So, flyers have gone out, social media's gone out about it, so I hope to see, invite the public to be here, and we'll provide some context and ideas about what some of the challenges that we have as a city, and what may be some of those potential options that the council and the city can consider moving forward. Thank you, Mayor Sternquist.
Thank you, Brian. All right. We move to item 13, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any?
Forgot the city attorney.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Never a problem. Just as the council knows, and for the good of the public, the time for the governor to sign bills or not sign bills has passed. You saw in the news several of those bills. Our firm is putting together an analysis of the ones really applicable to the cities, and that will be going to the city manager and his team, but I will also make sure that gets to the council for your review, and then we'll probably be highlighting a few of those bills over the next couple of months in this report for the good of the public. Thanks so much.
Wasn't one of those bills, we had recently heard a report from you that we were kind of hoping the governor was not going to sign it, but then actually ended signing it?
I think that was SB 79, the transit one.
The transit one, yeah.
Very dense housing by transit.
And we signed a letter opposing that, I believe.
We did sign a letter opposing. It does not actually affect Temple City as currently constituted, but it is a step, I would say, in the wrong direction in that it casts a fairly wide half-mile radius around transit centers.
Yeah, I know it didn't really affect us, but we, I think we had joined a group of cities who were opposing it, but apparently, that fell on deaf ears.
Fell on deaf ears, and as I say, the concern for Temple City wasn't necessarily this bill, but when the state has been passing housing bills, they pass one, and then two, three years later, there's always another one, and those follow-on bills, now that the first one's in place, are the ones that we're really concerned about. So, we'll keep an eye out.
Thank you.
Okay, so, council item, sorry about that, Greg. Thank you for that update. And item 13, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee. Did we have any, Tom?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Item 14, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Councilmember Chavez?
Thank you. Just a comment, and maybe this is a discussion for later. I know Adam Matsumoto's not here tonight, but I've had several comments from residents, more like concerns regarding the lighting at Live Oak Park Playground. After dark, and I believe it was intended that way, that we did not put lighting specifically for after dark, because the goal was to not encourage people to go there after dark. Unfortunately, that's not happening, and if you've been to Live Oak Park after dark, it is just as packed as it is during the light hours. And I think some of that has to do with a lot of the sports activities that are there on the grass. But the problem is, there really is not sufficient lighting on the Live Oak Park Playground. My concern is one of liability, and I don't know if we need to look into that further or get some type of consideration from JPIA, but, yeah, I could foresee someone perhaps getting hurt and then claiming that there is not, there was not sufficient lighting to prevent that type of accident from occurring, and we were certainly aware of the fact, and I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there's people there till the park closes effectively at 10 o'clock. And so I don't know if that's come to staff, or if you're aware of that issue, but it's starting to come up, and, you know, it's a great thing. It's kind of a catch-22 in that, you know, we encourage people to use it, and that's the whole purpose of it, but at the same time, I don't think we want to create a situation where we don't have what one would call sufficient lighting for that type of crowd to continue playing after a certain hour, especially now when daylight savings is going to end, and that means it's going to get dark at 5 o'clock. And I can guarantee you that that park will be pretty crowded at 5 o'clock, and not only the park, but of course, the playground. So, I'm just kind of giving a heads-up, maybe, that maybe we need to take a look at that, and I don't know what the answer is. I don't know if the answer is to put more lighting, because that was a concern, I think, with the neighborhood when we were first putting that park in, but if that's the case, and we're not going to add more lighting, then I think we need to be concerned about not having people on that playground after dark. So, just my two cents.
Anything else?
Uh, no. Has anything happened in the last two weeks? What have we had?
Did we go to the league, or was that...
Well, no, I was at the league. Ed and I were at the league. Did you go to the league?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't see you, but I was there.
I see you, either.
Yeah, I know. I didn't see you. League was the league. I mean, you know, it's, there were good sessions, different sessions, homelessness, you know, some of the main things. Got my ethics training out of the way, so that was nice. Got to see a lot of people I hadn't seen in a long time, and it was a good conference overall, and I know that it was very well-attended. And I think this is the last year it's going to be in Long Beach. I think they're moving back up to San Jose next year, but it was nice to have it local. And I think, did we talked about, I do believe we did talk about JPIA conference last, at the last meeting, I think, or meeting before, so that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Chen?
Yes, back on that comment regarding the Live Oak Park Playground. When I attended the League of California City, we were each given a copy of the Western Cities Magazine, so I was very happy to see a very prominent feature of our Live Oak Park Playground, and one of their major feature stories, really putting Temple City on the map. So, of course, I swell with pride when I go to a statewide conference to see something, you know, Temple City that's featured there. So, I just echo Councilmember Chavez's point as well regarding the playground lighting. I think there's perhaps technology, like, you know, the updated lighting technology that would eliminate the spillover light, but still target in a way that would illuminate the sports field, the playground, and much of the park. So, I think staff's already kind of been taking the lead on some of those concepts, and I'm also working with the Clean Power Alliance on possible funding for those things. So, thank you for bringing that up, and that's all I have.
Okay. Mayor Protam?
Yeah, this past Friday, I had the opportunity of attending the Chamber, or Chamber of Commerce's legislative lunch. We had our assembly member, Mike Fong, as the guest speaker, and as usual, I think we're very grateful for his willingness to participate. This is not the first time he's been the speaker at the chamber's luncheon, and he always brings good information for those of us who may not be aware of what's happening in Sacramento. And I thought one of the more interesting questions was kind of asking the assembly member what his outlook is in the coming year, as there's a lot of pressures from the budgetary side, there's a lot of kind of political things going on... As there's a lot of pressures from the budgetary side, there's a lot of kind of political things going on that's impacting, you know, what's being cut, what's not being cut. But in any case, I just want to echo, I just want to say how much I appreciate him spending his time to share with us. I want to give a great shout out to the chamber board for their continued commitment in making these things happen. And, you know, speaking of Live Oak Park, I think the first time I came to that realization was actually at the, I think it was the Neon Night Walk. And I guess it wasn't apparent to me until it was after dark, everyone had the neon bands. And then the kids started entering the rocket structure. And so you couldn't really see the kids, but you saw all the neon bands moving around. And that's how I was able to keep track of where my son was because he was wearing a color that was different from everyone else's. But yeah, I think Councilmember Chavez's point is well-taken. And you know, as a parent and constituent, I think we would have the same concerns for our own children as well as anyone who's choosing to use and enjoy the playground space. But I think on a brighter note, I think it shows how popular the playground has been. There's always this concern that, oh, is it only popular because it's brand new in that first couple of months? And then the hype kind of dies down. But I don't think the hype has died down at all.
It hasn't died down at all.
Yeah. And the other thing I've also noticed, because Primrose Park is closer to my house, that place hasn't died down either. So there's good use across all of our parks, including, I've been going to the farmer's market on Sundays, which by the way, is pretty well-done. My son actually enjoys it because he likes picking fruit himself. But the Temple City Park Playground is actually pretty heavily used on the weekends as well. So I mean, to Councilmember Chen's point, yeah, it's great to see Western City Magazine cover us, but just seeing it yourself on a day-to-day basis, you could tell that, yeah, it is a heavily-used parks facility all across the board. So the fact that we're looking at, you know, Sereno and the old Chamber site kind of adds to this kind of anticipation, I guess, of adding more to what we've already been building. And it definitely is something that I too swell with pride when I see our parks being used and enjoyed to such a great extent.
Mayor, can I?
Yes, of course.
I want to thank Ed for bringing that up. I completely forgot about the magazine. And, you know, when you get to the conference, they give you your little package. And of course, that Western magazine was part of that package. And I didn't realize there was an article in there. And I'm just kind of leafing through and looking, hey, that looks familiar. And then there's actually an article and photos of the park and the playground. And you know, sometimes, and I know it probably happens to all of you as well, but you know, you go to these conferences, you start talking to other people from other cities and things. And sometimes they're not always just familiar with Temple City. Like, okay, where is Temple City? And I did kind of, same thing, kind of swell with pride when I was able to say, "Well, look in your magazine and check out the article on our new playground." And when they did, they were very pleased and, not surprised, I wouldn't say surprised, but pleased and proud of the fact that, yeah, that's pretty cool. And so it was nice to get that shout-out. And I believe it's on our website now, isn't it? Or did you put it on our website? I know that there's a link somewhere, but.
If there's not a link, we'll get a link.
Yeah, maybe get a link to it so that the public can actually read some good comments by Adam in there as well and others. So yeah, it's nice to get that because to figure back on your comments, you know, we've done a lot of work in the last few years. And some of, most of it is geared to, we knew we were park poor and we've done something about that. And I think we're all proud of the fact that we do have some pretty nice playgrounds and parks in the city now. And people are enjoying them. They're, you know, Jane goes in the morning and it's, you would think that it would be less crowded because the summer is over. But no, it's not. It's still pretty busy all day long and it's well-used. All of them, all the parks are, so that's a good thing. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Nothing else? Alright, I just want to thank Greg for hosting the cities that you work with at the league. It was a lovely reception and thanks again. It was nice to be able to stop by for a bit.
Was Eric there?
No, I can let you know offline where he was.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
I, you know, just want to shout out to Liz because she does a great job of keeping my calendar because there are so many things to go to. And thank you, William, too, because a few of them, I have just said, "Would you please contact Mayor Protam?" And he has gone. But this Friday, same time as the legislative luncheon, I was at the Business Life Luncheon at the Castaways. I hadn't been there since I was in high school, I think, so it was kind of fun to go. They had proms there in Burbank, the one up on the hill. Used to have proms there.
Oh, yeah, up in the hill.
Yeah, up in the hill. But Marissa Krieter, who is the executive director of the COG, was one of the honorees as well as Yoko Iga from Foothill Transit. So it was nice to be able to go and support both of them. Both lovely ladies and both doing a great job in their respective roles. So I can't even tell you what I did the week before that. It's just all a blur. But with all the layos on groups, there's something going on almost every day. So if you don't mind, William, I'll shoot you a few more. So thank you. And I know Ed loves to go. So if you can't go, just shoot him one and Ed will go. And Tom's busy working, I know, and Vince, so. Anyway, that's all. Just want to thank Alicia for coming out again. Alicia, you stood for the whole meeting, so please know that you will get contacted. And Jing, I see you. Anything new, Jing, you want to share? Alright, so we.
Mayor, can I add one more thing?
Yes, of course.
Because you mentioned how busy you were and the stuff you asked us to help you with. There is one event I just want to share, which both Councilmember Chen and I were at the West San Gabriel Valley Realtors Association. They hosted a panel with several elected officials. I had the chance to be on that panel along with some of our colleagues from adjacent cities like San Gabriel, Monterey Park, and Arcadia. And the question that they had asked the panel was, "What programs or services did we as cities have when it came to rental assistance, housing assistance, et cetera?" I mean, it sounded really specific, but as the panel was discussing, it kind of broadened in terms of the scope of the questions. And something I was really, really proud of, and I want to thank our city manager, Brian Cook, and staff for preparing me for that, was sharing the success that we've had in working with Family Promise and also working with, and through them, working with the school district and helping identify families that were potentially on the verge of homelessness and providing them the assistance needed. Because this was something that other cities didn't bring up. So it was, in a way, unique to us. And so that was a very proud moment. And definitely talked about the popularity of our CDBG funding for the, I just lost track, the housing repairs that families can apply for grants or no-interest loans on. So it was great to kind of share that with a broader audience. And there was a little bit of discussion that kind of crept into housing, land use, and of course, our favorite subject, Sacramento, came up. But it was a good discussion. It was good to see the challenges our neighboring cities face that we shared. And it was good to kind of have a lot of the folks who are in the real estate industry hear where our concerns are when it comes to policymaking and what each city individually faces. So it was a good opportunity. I want to thank Councilmember Chen for being there for moral support as well.
Now that you mention that, I just want to share two things, is that the city of Pasadena, I just read today, has implemented, they're using some CDBG funds, Brian, maybe you are aware of it. They are giving businesses $20,000 to help with the signage on the outside window replacement. But I thought it was an interesting, it was just an on-the-surface article, but it would be interesting to see how they're going about doing that and what the response is from the business owners in Pasadena. And I just totally forgot what the other item was. So anyway, I think if everybody's finished, then.
Did you have public comments?
I am right now because you reminded me. So can we have any final public comments?
Yes.
You know, Jerry, I oftentimes forget because we're one of the, I think we're one of the very few organizations that I serve on that allows public comment at the end of a meeting. So I have to keep reminding myself about the additional public comment here.
Well, I'm real happy about that because maybe 15 or 20 years ago, when we had the two Marys and the Jerry, we kind of asked for that second public comment.
Yes, you did.
Because when you talk about things, we don't have the opportunity to talk about it either, so.
That's the whole idea.
It's not too early, and I just want to encourage people to put it on their calendars, especially the ones that are listening from home. But we have a Halloween event coming up at Live Oak Park on the 31st. And it's a popular event where maybe 1,500 to 2,000 people come out. And it's a safe event for children and parents alike, so we have a lot of fun doing it. If you know Parks and Recreation, which I call the Fun Department, they know how to do things. So they really do a great job in putting this together. The next thing would be.
Just so you know, real quick, before you move on.
Yes.
Just, I think this year, it's going to be bigger than ever because it's, first of all, it's on a Friday.
Yes.
And last year, you know, they have that trunk-or-treat where organizations set up their trunks and they give out candy to the people who attend. Last year, they recommended that the organizations bring about 1,000.
Yes.
This year, they recommended, I think, 8,000 pieces of candy to be given out.
Yeah.
So there's going to be a lot of people there.
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Everybody's going to Sam's Club and buying up the candy, so that's good. The next thing is we honor our veterans on November the 11th at 10:30 in the park. And it's always a good event and a keynote speaker. The last thing, and it's not too early to put it on your calendar, and that's Lights On Temple City, December the 5th. And it is a fun, great event. So put those things on your calendar and come on out because Temple City is a fun place to be, the last two months especially of the year.
Do we know who the keynote speaker is?
I don't know. Adam hasn't told me yet. I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Alright, if, I don't know where the agenda is now, but anyway, I think that's it. We're adjourned.